Welcome to the Board of Town School Board Association meeting of June 28, 2022. I'm going to call this order, this, this meeting to order. First, before I do that, we just had a board of directors met on today, June 28, an executive session to meet on the area of real estate. The meeting was 25 minutes. Thank you. Next, pledge of allegiance and moment of silence, please. Oh, call order, I'm sorry, I did, I did that first. Oh, sorry, roll call.
Mr. Panarello.
Here.
Mr. Updegrove. Mr. Zawada.
Here.
Mrs. Scott. Ms. Dieroff. Mr. Hemingway.
Here.
Mrs. Hogan.
President, our mics are not working.
Yeah, our mics aren't turning on.
Somebody's, somebody's left on? Mine's on.
Ms. Nyman.
Here.
Mr. Brophy.
Here.
Who's mics don't, don't run on? You three?
Claudia, what's in your work?
Kayla, ready?
Mine don't work?
Okay, over here? Over there, we working?
That's fine, but it don't work.
We'll get the plug out right there. On the side.
Mine's plugged in.
No, he's missing one of the plugs. It's out.
Mine's working.
Yeah, I know, but it's not connected to the.
Oh.
You don't have to pull that, just put it back on the other side.
What's over here? It's within those.
Yeah, this is, this is a baby.
Right here.
Yeah, no, you say.
Sorry.
Yeah. Everybody back? Okay. Roll call done, everybody got in? Okay, now for a pledge of allegiance and moment of silence.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic of which states, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited and endless.
Okay, moving on to public comment number one. I need to read. On behalf of the school board of directors, I would like to welcome you to this meeting. We welcome your attendance and input from stakeholders to assist us with making account recommendations and decisions related to the Boerertown Area School District. This procedure and rules for public participation are detailed in BSAD Policy 006. This document is available at this meeting on BSAD website. Participants properly registered on the sign up sheet will be recognized by the presiding officer. Public comment period number one is limited to topics on tonight's agenda. Participants must preface their comments by an announcement of their name, group affiliation if that is appropriate. All statements, inquiries, or comments should be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually, administrative team members individually, school employees, or members of the public individually. Note that we value and will not compromise the privacy of our students and staff. Please see us outside the realm of the public meeting if you have a concern about an individual staff member or student. If public comment includes a question, Mrs. Thorshur or her staff will be in contact with you to confirm your question and provide you with information. Comments are limited to three minutes and comment period limited to 30 minutes. Individuals may indicate a desire to speak a second time if there is time left on the 30 minute period. Finally, note that we do record our board and committee meetings and we post them on YouTube with a link to our website. We request that you do, if they take pictures and record a meeting yourself, you do so in a non-disruptive and discreet manner, those materials respectfully and responsibly. Okay. Think, just head on.
Jim, I'm sure Frank may have something.
Oh, you have some back there? Okay, thank you. Okay. Ms. Don Yusavich, please, speaking for John Amy.
No, I'm not speaking for John Amy. I'm speaking for myself.
Oh, okay, I need to ask you a question and you're listed here as speaking for John Amy and speaking for yourself, which is it?
Who said that?
John, John Amy, Don Yusavich will be speaking on his behalf.
Well, I'm not.
Okay. Okay. So, all right, fine, then, thank you.
That's why I'm also signed up for myself.
Yes, you're signed up. That's, the, the question was going to be coming up is, we don't normally allow for proxy speaking, but we had agreed to do that if, if that was for the requirement.
I can't be talking, but I'm speaking.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
All right.
All right, tonight, Don Yusavich, tonight you are gambling with our school district's future as you vote for the final 2022-23 budget. Compared to past practice, the budget presentations have been exceedingly sparse and the board questions have been almost nonexistent. And while I've seen budget goals listed in the presentations, I haven't seen how the budget supports those goals. Here are my three major concerns about the budget as presented. First and foremost, you are using over 26% of your fund balance in order to keep taxes lower. Fund balances are often used to address one-time issues. According to the May 10 budget presentation, these funds will be used to pay for the following key increases: Peasars, benefits, contracted services, and inflationary impacts. All these items are not one-time issues, in fact, they are absolutely certain to continue increasing. So what happens next year? Do you need to use over 50% of the remaining fund balance to keep the taxes lower? And the following year, will you have enough left in our fund balances to stay afloat? Keep in mind that administration has told you that only a very small part of our budget is under our control, and so the only way to balance a budget in the absence of available funds is to cut non-mandated services: kindergarten, bus transfer, bus transportation, sports, music, electives. Also, keep in mind that our CFO has stated that lower fund balances negatively impact our bond rating, limiting our district's ability to get favorable financing terms, and that currently our fund balance represents less than two months of our annual expenses. I know I prefer to keep more than two months of savings in my personal accounts to prepare for emergencies. Also, keep in mind that your CFO stated that if the number of charter school students returns to pre-pandemic levels, there could be a big reduction in expenditures. While that would be great, when asked by a board member about progress there, she offered to provide, but to my knowledge has not yet done so. This sounds like a hope, not a plan. And we all heard at a prior meeting that raising taxes to just 3.5% would more than halve the amount needed to be taken from the fund balance. Are you really comfortable with this budget recommendation in this uncertain economy? This is where five-year projections, varying assumptions, and parameters would have come in handy. I'm speaking of the five-year projections, admittedly seen by your board president and requested by board members, but never, to my knowledge, provided to you. I've never seen a board make a budget, budget decision without considering these factors.
30 seconds?
Secondly, you seem to blindly accept the analysis done by your CFO stating that a tax increase of 3% would yield less revenue than a higher tax increase. Finally, the impacts of this budget have not been well communicated. It seems improbable that 10 teaching positions could be eliminated without some impact to class sizes or program offerings, and we are hearing rumblings of both from parents around the district. I beg you, please don't be reckless with the future of our community, and thank you for allowing me to speak this evening.
Okay, you were signed up for a second time, also?
Yes. This is policy, the policies. In addition to my own concerns, the following comments this evening also reflect the concerns of John Amy, who is unable to attend this evening. I see that first readings of Policies 006 and 903 are on the agenda tonight. As a point of order, I'd like to request that you confirm that they were properly un表ed, allowing you to put them on the agenda after they were tabled on May 24. I believe you need a motion and a vote to take the topic of first readings of Policies 006 and 903 off the table. When you do take this policy off the table, we urge you to change Policy 903 to eliminate the need for preregistration for public comment. The reasons are manifold. Pre-registration inhibits public participation in critical issues facing our district. The best schools have a trusting, open relationship between board, administration, employees, and public stakeholders. Pre-registration adds an unnecessary burden on an already stretched and stressed administration and staff. Please help them focus on the important aspects of their job. And because preregistration will not be required for items added to the agenda in the course of a meeting, the board is already accepting the risk that a non-resident may end up speaking. So this is a tacit admission that the risk is not such a big deal that we need a policy to mitigate it. The solution is simple: let the public know that only residents are entitled to speak, and then let anyone who signs up make their comment. We should be doing all we can to encourage, not discourage, public participation. Please reconsider and remove the preregistration requirement. Unneeded policies are bad policies. Thank you.
Okay, I think, I don't think he's ever signed up, so next we go to his approval of minutes. Okay, call for vote, call for vote, vote now?
Motion and second?
Motion. And a second?
Zawada.
Motion, second. Motion, Mr. Updegrove, second.
Zawada.
Mr. Zawada?
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff. Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We do, we move right on to the, we have nothing this evening, and so we can just move right through with regards to reporting the president. Do you have a report, Mr. President?
Nothing to report.
Our finance reports, treasurer's report we have this evening.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to highlight a few items from the treasurer's report for the month of May 2022. For local revenue, delinquent tax collection was approximately $108,000. Earned income tax collection was approximately $262,000, and transfer tax collection was approximately $133,000. For state revenue, our PDE social security subsidy was approximately $951,000. PDE sinking fund subsidy was approximately $33,000. And for federal revenue, our grant subsidy was approximately $5,400. Regarding May expenditures, salaries, benefits, and professional services account for 83% of the monthly expenditure. And this concludes the treasurer's report. Thank you.
Case?
No report tonight.
That's okay. Next, the solicitor's report?
I have no report.
Superintendent's report?
We will move right to the consent agenda. For approval by the Board of School Directors, we will have the district envelope bids, real estate tax installment payment plan, homestead-farmstead property tax relief, 22-23 food service budget approval, donation of two soccer goals, first reading of Policy 006, first reading of Policy 903. So I'm looking for a motion from the school board of directors to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a concern.
Well, we need to have a motion first and a second.
Zawada, motions.
Mr. Zawada, motion, second. Okay, Mr. Updegrove again, and then Mr. Updegrove, second.
Also Ruth, I remember Ruth.
Yeah, she's a third. Okay, so now we can move to a concern, is that how this?
She can comment.
Can we comment at this point, or is it?
She can comment at this point.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. So, one, I'm concerned about if, if this Policy 006 and 903 were tabled on the 24th, do we, have we followed procedure to bring them up and put them on the consent agenda? We don't need to vote on that? We don't need to vote to untable them?
Yes, we do. We always did for.
Was, you're gonna have to refresh my recollection, were those two motions tabled at that time?
So the following meeting, which we then put it back in the consent agenda, so it was tabled.
Okay, you said it was tabled to the following meeting.
To the following meeting and went back in. We've had discussions on those policies in two separate meetings, one we tabled, and then we had another discussion the last meeting. So I believe we have followed proper procedure to do that.
I don't recall voting to put it back on, I do recall the discussion.
Yeah.
But I don't recall voting to put it back on the agenda.
I don't see where there's a vote to put it back on the agenda.
Yes, we always did that.
That's what I'm questioning.
Why would there be a vote to put it back on the agenda?
Normally, when a motion is tabled, there needs to be an action to bring it back to the table. And I think that's what is being raised here. The only issue that I don't know is if the motion said it was tabled to come back to the board at the next meeting, then I don't think you need to bring a motion to bring that back to the table.
Well, I did say that at that meeting.
Well, was that part of the motion in the second? And it's? The minutes, yeah.
I'd have to see if it's in the minutes, I don't know if it was.
Okay.
And it may have been just Policy 903. It may have just been Policy 903 that was tabled, and I don't remember us bringing it back from being tabled. Just because it was put on the agenda doesn't mean, we've never done that before, never.
It was, it was tabled to the next meeting, so I guess my question to you right now would be, if you had this issue, why wasn't it brought up at the next meeting? And why, when we discussed it and gave a thumbs up to go forward with it? So why are you waiting to now to bring this up?
Because I didn't think about it until a member of the audience brought it up about being tabled. And it was tabled, and anytime we've had anything tabled before, we had to bring it back off and vote on it to bring it back to the table again.
What could be the vote?
There'll be a motion to bring the first reading of, now, what I'm hearing is, it doesn't apply to the Policy 006 reading, but it does apply arguably to the 903.
It's both, it says motion to table Policy 006 and Policy 903. Okay, that's from the minute. Okay. I thought it was just 903, but.
I have a question. Could we just?
We could, we could address this issue by the consent agenda at this point in time is to withdraw the motion to approve the consent agenda in the second, and then have a motion right now as part of the consent agenda to bring back the first reading of Policy 006 and the first reading of Policy 903.
Would those two, who made the motion in the second, modify their motion?
They would, they would.
Where we have a first and a second, if they'd be willing to modify that.
They could do that, or they could withdraw, they could be withdrawn at this point.
Whoever first, would that, Jeff, would you be willing to modify your?
Motion to include reintroducing these policies into the consent agenda, and Ruth, I believe it was Ruth, Ruth, would you, Mr. Updegrove, would you second that?
Well, actually, what you could do, you could make it easy, do it all at once, is a motion to bring back to the table sub-items F and G, namely the first reading of Policy 006 and the first reading of Policy 903, and to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Sound good, Jeff?
Yeah. Yes.
Roger, would you second that?
Yeah.
I agree.
Can we vote now?
I have further, I have a further concern. Okay, so my further concern is that I've done some extensive reading today, and it looks like best practice is that when a board member asks for policy to be removed, or not policy, but an item to be removed off of the consent agenda, that it gets removed. I did ask for that to happen, not because I want to further discuss these policies, but because I've, I will vote no to these policies, and having them on the consent agenda forces me to vote no to the real estate tax installment payment plan, the homestead-farmstead, the envelopes bid, the food service approval budget, the donation of soccer goals. And I don't think that that's fair or reasonable, which is why I would like them removed. And then there is the policy of calling for the vote if you don't want to continue discussion.
Well, in this case, we have a first and a second, so I think it's appropriate to take the vote, and then you can bring up your concerns.
Once the vote's taken, and I've already voted no.
Okay.
Right, so I just feel that, I feel, I understand that. I'm explaining how I feel, and that I feel that this is an improper use of the consent agenda, that policy, especially policy that is contentious, does not belong there, because the consent agenda is for items that are not contentious, as per best practice. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
I always thought too, Mr. Sultanic, when we had something tabled and we brought it back out, it was brought back out for discussion again.
That's not necessarily the case. I'm just saying, but we are bringing this back. This motion, I think, is appropriate under the circumstances. Now, remember also, this is only a first reading of the policy, it's not the final reading of the policy, we're not adopting it this evening.
But still, we'll never get it back on the regular agenda.
You could, you could get it back on the regular agenda.
How? We've tried.
You could, you could make a motion later on to, after, after it gets approved to a majority, the board can compel this to be subject to discussion at a future meeting. We're not precluded. In fact, Ms. Hogan asked me that question last evening, and I responded to that effect. So you, you are not precluded from doing that down the road. But the motion is on the table right now to approve the consent agenda and to bring those two items back to the table.
You have first and the second, correct?
We have, we have it already.
So now it's just, now it's just.
That's just a roll call.
Okay.
Okay.
Just in retrospect, this would be the third time we brought this thing back out again. I was requested to bring it out of the consent agenda two, two meetings ago, I did that, we had discussion on it for a long time. We moved it out as an itemized issue the last meeting, we had another long discussion on it again. So is there any new, any, any new information that would compel me to even think about it?
My objection is not to further discussion. My objection is that by placing it on the consent agenda, because I am voting no to these two policies, I am forced to vote no to the other things on the consent agenda which I would, which I would vote yes to. I think that it's, I think what we're starting here is very bad practice, and I think it could really have implications further down the line.
I, I think that's an issue that probably could be addressed in policy separately, because it is not currently addressed. I understand what your point is.
Right, yeah.
I'm not inclined still at this point to move it out of the consent agenda.
So the matter is now up for vote?
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
No.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan.
No.
Ms. Nyman.
No.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next we have the superintendent's report on itemized agenda, looking for a motion from the board of school directors to approve the personnel agenda as presented.
Nyman moves.
Vote?
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
I'm voting yes, but you didn't ask for comments before you took the vote.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have the school board of directors to approve the final general fund budget for the 22-23 school year as presented.
Motion?
Zawada.
Mr. Zawada, motions first, Mr. Updegrove second. Okay?
Thank you. Yes, I will be voting no to the, to the general fund budget, because there were several questions that I answered and that I never received answers to. I don't feel that it has been proven to me that 3% is enough to cover our obligations. And I'm also surprised that there is not a budget presentation. I know in past years, every year that I've sat through a budget approval, like the final approval, there was always a pretty comprehensive presentation. So that's all for me, thank you.
So what I'm, just so I understand here, the 3% to you is not a high enough number, is that correct?
No, that's not correct. I'm, I'm saying, I don't know if the 3% is high enough, low enough, or what it is, because I don't feel that I've been given all the information that I asked for to be able to make an informed decision and informed vote.
Okay, so you just, you don't have enough information, it's not that you want higher taxes, is that correct?
Correct. I mean, I don't, yeah, that's correct.
Just going with the facts.
No, I appreciate it.
Any other comments? Ms. Scott?
Yes, I'm also going to be voting no on this tonight. I don't feel that I've had adequate information, some of the questions that I've asked for information I haven't received, and so I can't really go along with this tonight either.
Any other comments? Okay, call for vote?
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
No.
Ms. Dieroff. Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan.
No.
Ms. Nyman.
No.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
That completes my report, Mr. Brophy.
Next we go to old business?
None.
Now, public comment period number two, I believe, Mrs. Yusavich.
Oh, I have none.
You have none?
But the paper's not out there anymore.
No, you brought those back in.
At public comment period number one, before, before the board's vote. It should stay out there until after the.
Do you, do you have a comment for public, for number two? Ms. Delks?
Can you get a signed paper?
No, we'll get you signed as well.
Nicole Delks. Nicole Delks, I find it very concerning that we had multiple board members stand up here tonight and say they weren't given information in regard, that they requested in regards to this budget. I find that very concerning. It's one thing not to answer us as the public, but actual board members do deserve the information that they asked for. So I would like a response on why that information was not provided to the board members. So you can contact me via email, which I believe you all have, or whomever would handle that, and let me know why board members were not provided information that they requested to make a decision on the budget. Thank you.
Mrs. Thorshur, you understand the question?
Yeah.
Next we go to board comments. Start out with Mrs. Nyman.
No comment, because I see the attitude already, thank you.
Updegrove. Ms. Hogan.
Can you come back to me? I appreciate it.
Ms. Scott.
No comment.
Mr. Zawada.
I don't know if now's the right time to ask it, but have we found or made any headway towards the girls' basketball coach?
The advertisement for the position closes on the 30th, and we will be bringing somebody forward. forward at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Panarello? Mr. Hemingway?
No comment.
I have no comment. Mrs. Dorsia, upcoming meeting dates? I'm sorry. Ms. Dieroff, I keep forgetting you, I'm sorry. Comments?
I think she said no. No comment, Mrs. Dieroff? It's better I don't make a comment tonight, I think.
Okay. Let's move to upcoming meeting minutes?
Our upcoming meeting, meeting dates are July 12th, August 9th, and August 23rd.
With that, meeting adjourned?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, I'm sorry. Motion to adjourn. Now, the motion, second. Updegrove, second. Meeting is adjourned.